Welcome to our regular meeting of Board of Commissioners for January. Our Township Commissioner is away on vacation and subbing tonight is Assistant Township Manager and Director of Finance, Amy Cuthbertson. Could you please call the rolls?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Here.
Mr. Aliva.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here. I'd ask all to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and our Chief of Police will lead us in.
(inaudible) United States of America, with due to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm obligated to inform the public that after our organization meeting last week, the Board of Commissioners met in executive session on a personnel and real estate matter, and this evening, prior to this meeting, we met in executive session on a real estate issue. At this time, we have a proclamation, and this is a happy one, I'm proud to say. I think we've waited 50 years to do this, but Chief John Viola has reached a milestone in his career, in his life, I guess. He's reached the 50 years with our police department.[83.54][83.54](applause) And it's going to be, John, it's going to be our pleasure to issue this proclamation. So if you would come forward with your family, and then, since we're never going to see this again in our lifetime, I'm going to ask all nine Commissioners to come down and make this presentation with me and Steve, who's the Commissioner on the Police Liaison to the Board. So if we'd all come down and flank John, four on each side. I see a lot of police officers here this evening. Welcome, gentlemen. It looks like most of you weren't even born when John started, so...[146.22][146.22](laughter) We get all the family, any other family. So I'm going to read the formal proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in recognizing a township employee that has actively been involved in the Haverford Police Department and has reached a 50-year milestone.[175.93][175.93](pause) Fifty. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania wishes to recognize and honor Chief John F. Viola upon the completion of his 50 years as a Haverford Township Police Officer. Whereas Chief John Viola has served the citizens of Haverford Township for over 50 years as a police officer, and since September 1967 as a volunteer fireman for the Brookline Fire Company. And whereas Chief John Viola was appointed as a police officer on January 16, 1970. During his tenure as the Haverford, with the Haverford Police Department, he has served as a patrol officer, juvenile detective, special operations officer, patrol sergeant, Sergeant of the Special Operations Unit, and Deputy Chief of Police. Chief Viola was appointed as the 13th Chief of Police on January 11, 2016. Chief Viola has served under seven police chiefs and has seen 142 officers hired since he started in 1970. And whereas Chief John Viola is available 24 hours, seven days a week for the Haverford Township, and will be often seen at all hours on many police calls as the Chief of Police, or fire calls as the Chief of Brookline Fire Company. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford that you, Chief John Viola, have served and will continue to serve this township and its residents well. Thank you, Chief Viola, for your dedicated service for the past 50 years, and for the years to come. Proclaim this 13th day of January 2020, Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township.
Your family.
Sure.
My family.
All your family.[313.12][313.12](laughter)
You got one, Jimmy. Want to come up and give me a hand?[325.02][325.02](laughter)
Well, when I, when I came upstairs tonight, obviously, I had an inkling this was going to happen, but I didn't think it was going to be to this extent. To all my friends, Fire Company, police officers, Commissioners, family, I really, when I came up, I was really overwhelmed when I, when I saw everybody here, but it means so much to me. And the most important people in my life are here tonight. No one can ever imagine the hours I spend away from home with various meetings, work-related issues. I'm always somewhere but at home. So a very special thank you to my wife Denise, who puts up with me with all of this. I know that in our 38 years together, I'm not always the easiest person to live with.[373.00][373.00](laughter) My children have followed my passion into public service. Christopher, a police officer here, and his wife Jess, my granddaughter Emily, wherever she is.
That's right.
My daughter Stephanie, a schoolteacher at Haverford, and her fiance Marco. The Commissioners have gave me the opportunity to be Chief of Police in the best community in Delaware County. It's so very important to have elected officials who support the police department in every way possible and allow us to do our jobs. Township Manager Dave Berman, Assistant Manager Amy Cuthbertson, Dan Marianni, all thank you. Police work can be an emotional rollercoaster. We see the very good side of people, and of course, the down and dirty part of humanity that makes us all look at life a little differently. Our officers of this Police Department, who worked through all of this, really deserve the recognition for the daily part that they do, which makes my job much easier. Ladies and gentlemen of the Police Department, thank you very much. The Deputy Chief Joe Hagan, Joe, where are you? You are the best. It's important that you can rely on and trust people you work closely with, and Joe is it. Lieutenant's Mike Glenn, Craig Scott, Jim Kelly, and all the Sergeants, who I continually rely on. To all of my friends and coworkers, a special thanks to the Records Office, Personnel, Colleen, Linda, Jen, Debbie, and Keith, who took the time to be here tonight. I'm humbled and honored that you all are here to mark the smiles, saying with me. A special thanks to Larry, Jen Tellier, my good friend, who was very instrumental for me to move forward in this job. Larry, you're always with me, you know that. Working for Haverford Township has been a labor of love, and I hope to continue with it for at least a little while longer.
We'll take a two-minute recess if anybody wants to exit the room without doing anything.[523.16][523.16](laughter) Our next, our next item is a presentation from our Historical Commission by Susanna Aruco, right?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much. So I have to apologize right off that we're tardy, so I'm going to hit you with three years tonight, but it's a short presentation, and we hope to be a little bit more timely with our reports going forward.
Great.
So I just wanted to give you a review of where the Commission members are from 2006 to the present. 2019 is, you can kind of see, I've color-coded it, so you can see when we've, people have stepped down from the Commission or completed their service, and 2019 is on the far right. So, starting with 2016, we reviewed seven projects. They're all listed there. I assume you all have, so you can see, I'm not going to read everything, and I'm not going to give you an example of each project, I just really thought I'd give you some highlights from the projects that we've reviewed. So the Marion Golf Club, the West Course, I thought it would be fun to see what the West Course looked like in the early, early 1900s, on the top there with the carriage in the background. The bungalow is on the right, and you can see in that middle image that there is a green tented area, that's their dining pavilion area. They came to us with two projects, one to put a new cedar shingle roof on the bungalow, which was really a restoration project, and then to somewhat formalize their dining pavilion. And we worked with them on the design of this timber-framed dining pavilion, which I don't think has been built yet, but you can see it has an outdoor fireplace, and it's really just intended to replace the tent, but still provide just outdoor informal seating. This is one of the Sears houses, the Sears Kit Houses that we have in the township, of which we have several. They came to us to propose a two-story addition on the rear, and you can see kind of the existing condition on the top left, and then the proposed addition on the bottom left. And that was approved. For 2017, we had seven projects, and you'll see that some of these projects came before us more than once. Whitby Hall came before us with an addition and renovations and a new garage, a freestanding garage, and we worked with them from 2017 through 2018, in fact. The McGill Library at Haverford College came to us with renovations and additions, rather extensive renovations. They came to us in 2017 with their preliminary plans, did about 10% with their schematic designs, and we worked with them through 2017 and 2018 to finalize the project in our Whitby Hall, this is an interesting project. It was actually a house that was, it was a, an 18th-century house that was moved to Haverford in the early 20th century, and that move was designed by Wilson Eyre, who was a very prominent architect here in Philadelphia. And there's a site plan there on the top right. You can see in the kind of darker brown, that's the proposed addition onto the house, connected to a new freestanding garage. And there were also other changes proposed to the exterior of the house. We worked with them for some time, they came with us with additions and with this original plan, but then came back later also with changes. The top-left photograph is just an example of the quality of the, of the architecture of this house. Just so you know, we have some great stuff here in the township. This was a great project. This was the first project, the first of two so far, where we've seen facades restored along this small commercial area in, in the township on Eagle Road. The former jewelry shop was purchased by Weideman Architects, and they restored the facade, the facade next door, well, actually, not quite next door, if you'll get the top-right image, you see Weideman, then the inn, and then there's that kind of blue and red facade, and the one adjacent to it, still retaining their original materials, and Weideman basically used what he had, surviving on his building, and then copied what was missing from the original materials on the others. So we thought this was a great success, and it was actually an award winner, although I forget who gave them the award. The McGill Library, this was what we first received in 2017. On the top was a preliminary proposal, and then you can see on the bottom is basically an addition, I guess I can't really point, but the addition is on pretty much all, all on the right of the image there. And here you can see the extent of the proposed demolition in the top image, and then the proposed addition just from the north elevation, although the addition wrapped around the whole side of the building. 760 College Avenue is one of the mid-century modern houses in the township, and they came to us also with a proposed addition to expand their house. You can see that they really kept with the overall character, the mid-century modern, very kind of boxy and simple, just like the original building, so that was also approved. In 2018, six projects, again, Whitby Hall, they thought that they could save their original windows, but they eventually proposed replacement, which often happens. Another project on Eagle Road, McGill Library, Ashton Road siding replacement, Maryland Woods unfortunate demolition, which was supposed to be a structural stabilization, and 2400 Darby Road demolishing the gas station, and that was simply because it was within 100 feet of properties listed on the Historic Resource Survey, and that would be the properties on Eagle Road. So the Kelly Center, this was another great project on Eagle Road, where they took a, essentially, somewhat dilapidated and older facade and restored it to be compatible with what it would, might have been originally. So Eagle Road is really starting to look great with these historic resources being Maryland Woods, this was part of the Thompson's Estate in the early 1900s. Thompson was a niece of John Wanamaker, and the building that you're looking at here was originally a kennel, used to raise beagles, possibly for hunt. The building has been distressed. We met with the property owner first in 2010, and the property was distressed at that point. We tried to work with them, and others tried to work with them outside of the Historical Commission to preserve the site, repurpose the site, et cetera, to no avail. They came back to us in 2018 with a proposal to demolish portions of the building and to structurally, to structurally stabilize it, and without an approval from the Historical Commission, they went ahead and the whole building was demolished. So that was an unfortunate loss in the township. This is just an update on how the McGill Library looked. We met with them in 2018 to, you can see the project is under construction, we met with them to review materials. The basentry, you can see on the top right, we looked at brick with them, we looked at replacement stone, and we also looked at windows. They were a really great client, and Haverford College, I think at one time they wanted to be taken off the survey, but working with them, they clearly have a strong feeling about preserving the character of their campus, and that was great. Other activities at the Historical Commission, so the Historic Resource Survey, we applied, so if you may or may not know, that we are a certified local government, which is a program run by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, the State Historic Preservation Office, that provides support to governments like Haverford Township. You apply for it, so we applied for it successfully 2015, maybe? I don't remember. At any rate, they offer a grant program, we applied for a grant, we asked for $20,000 to update our survey, and we were successful in receiving a $14,000 grant, the status of which I don't know. Maybe someone could tell me. We also, at Kelly Kirk's request, we developed an applicant checklist to help people who come before the Commission have a better idea of what we're looking for, so that they don't come to the meeting, and then we end up asking them for additional information, so we're trying to ease the process for applicants. Haverford Township Commission members have taken it upon themselves to update photographs of the properties on the Historic Resource Survey. This is actually a requirement of certified local governments. We're supposed to update our survey every 10 years, our survey dates to 1990, so an update is sorely needed. We also were approached by the American Legion Post 338, they would like to have their property on the Historic Resource Survey, and hopefully this year to honor their 100th anniversary. So we're working with them on doing that. In 2018, at our request, the Historical Commission was invited to be a consulting party as part of the Section 106 process with regard to the construction of the Ardmore Avenue Bridge. Section 106 is a review process, and we are invited to be a consulting party because the bridge is adjacent to, or adjacent to, a Historic Resource Survey property, and also to the Marion Golf Club, which is a national historic landmark, which is the highest designation in the United States. So I myself have been representing the Commission, attending site visits. And so here you can see in the top right, that was a site visit to look at the formliners that will be put to create this kind of faux stonework that you see in the bottom drawing. On the middle right, those were color samples. In the middle left, that was a marionette paying for their own masonry, real masonry work, but that was to look at colors for the, the top of the, the bridge walls. We've talked about the railing colors, so it's pretty comprehensive. And our principal contribution was to change what you see there, the actual bridge that goes over the railway, instead of being a faux stone, will be concrete with panels in it to replicate the bridge that was originally there, which we felt had historic merit, it dated to the 1920s, and it was connected, not physically, but visually and design-wise to the walls that are at the entrance to the Marion, or what is it, Golf? What is it?
Marion Manor.
Marion Manor, thank you, yes. And actually, Penn Doh was appreciative, they thought that having a break from the masonry was good, so we've had a positive influence there. Continuing the education, it's also a requirement of certified local government status. Stacy Maddox, the Chair, sitting behind me, has attended National Alliance for Preservation Commission's camp, remember? I attend the PA statewide heritage conferences. We continue with our outreach. Mario and I did a presentation on the development of the Township's preservation ordinance to the Delaware County Historic Preservation Network. I have to say, everyone in the room thought that Mario was the bee's knees, he was so popular that night. We continue to contribute Board of Commissioners newsletter articles, and as you can see in these images, we are at the Heritage Festival every year. And that's it. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to. Thank you again for your attention and for your support.
Thank you very much for that comprehensive report.[1328.33][1328.33](applause) Any questions from the Board? Again, thank you very, very much. Great job. Next item, our Police Department Crime Update, given by Deputy Chief Joe Hagan. Guess John's been around too long to do this now.[1354.01][1354.01](laughter)
Good evening.
Good evening.
During the month, we had 34 criminal arrests, zero juvenile arrests, 138 traffic citations, 21 non-traffic citations, 147 written warnings, 40 LARP parking tickets, and 226 automatic tickets. We had one robbery, which occurred at the Fuji Nails, is currently on the investigation. We're confident that it's going to be solved. The investigation's ongoing right now, we have identified one of the individuals, and we're working on identifying the other individuals. There was one burglary in the 1600 block of Hampton Road, one aggravated assault which occurred on the unit block of East Eagle Road. There was two motor vehicle thefts, both were U-Haul, thankfully, it wasn't any residential cars. This month, sound like people maybe got the hint of locking their cars, we had zero thefts from vehicles and zero temps during the past month. Theft of packages, we had three theft of packages, that seems to be the common theme around Christmas time, everyone's getting their Amazon deliveries, and there's been people going around taking that, those packages off of people's front porches. And there was four K-9 uses for the month. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? Great. Next item is the Township Order Update.
Hello, I've reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this meeting, I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction.
Thank you very much. Seems I skipped over, Mr. Siegel, would you give us an update on the ordinance concerning new properties?
Yes. When we last discussed this issue, I guess, a meeting or two ago, we had, our solicitor proposed two potential ordinances for consideration. We've looked at the two ordinances, I've spoken with the Solicitor's Office, and we're going to proceed with drafting one, which is based on a state law that would be relevant to properties that intermittently come up in the township. The other proposed ordinance addresses situations that thankfully are not common in Haverford and are in other communities, where they have more neighborhood issues, and would have had a significant cost to the township. So we anticipate having a draft ordinance for the Board next month.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Siegel? Our next item is the Citizens Forum. We have no registered speakers this evening, but is there any member of the public that wish, wishes to address the Board on an agenda item? Come on up.
Thank you. I have two things. One is, I mentioned in my presentation that the $14,000 CLG grant, and I'm told by the State Historic Preservation Office that they have yet to receive a signed grant agreement. And I'm also told that if they don't receive a signed grant agreement by last week, and I have not been able to get any information from the township, that that money will be lost. And so I would appreciate an update either this evening or at another time, but I haven't been able to get any.
We'll have to get to you tomorrow, first thing in the morning.
I'd appreciate that.
I'll have, you'll look at it.
I do have just a brief update. I think Mrs. Kirk was working on it because she had asked me today for some tax ID numbers and things like that, that the grantor was requiring.
Oh, okay.
So I believe it's in the works, but I'll check with her in the morning and see if there's anything more to add.
That's great, thank you. I wouldn't want to lose that. Terrific.[1594.47][1594.47](laughter) The other thing I just wanted to bring to your attention, and again, speaking this time as a member of the Historical Commission, is that the projects on Eagle Road that have happened already have really been great, positive projects for that stretch of commercial properties. We're concerned about the Brick and Brew because they have clearly undertaken exterior work, and to our knowledge, based on what Kelly has told us, they have not applied for a permit. And this is something that we have seen happen other times. There's a church in the township that was rehabilitated as a residence, and they did extensive renovations that we did review, but they went back again and did more renovations, and they did not come before us. We've tried to make the township aware, but we're concerned that these things just fall through the cracks, and so I wanted to take the opportunity to bring it to your attention tonight.
Okay, thank you. We'll make that, we'll get in touch with the Codes Office and...
Thank you.
Make sure...
Thanks a lot.
...there is a permit, number one.
Codes, I think, did go out. I haven't gotten a response as to what happened yet, but...
Okay.
They were made aware of it on Monday.
We'll follow up with Mr. Celia tomorrow morning. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak to us on an agenda item that we will be voting on this evening? There being none, that concludes the Citizens Forum. We will check on that. Next item is the Approval of Minutes, the Budget and the Regular Meeting Minutes of December the month.
Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget, regular meeting minutes of December 9, 2019.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions, corrections? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Wexler.
Yes. Item number nine, I'll ask Commissioner Holmes for the approval of warrants.
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number one of 2020 totaling $4,274,773.17, comprising the General and Sewer Fund payroll for December 12, 2019, in the amount of $989,322.3 (22 cents). The General and Sewer Fund payroll for December 26, 2019, in the amount of $664,887.07 (27 cents). The General and Sewer Fund payroll for January 9, 2020, in the amount of $951,522.85 (85 cents). General Fund dispersments number one of 2020, in the amount of $1,398,313.71 (71 cents). Sewer Fund dispersments number one of 2020, in the amount of $46,346.09 (9 cents). Community Development Block Grant Fund dispersment number one of 2020, in the amount of $95,115.67 (67 cents). Capital Projects Fund dispersment number one of 2020, in the amount of $124,000... Capital Projects Fund Dispersment Number One of 2020, in the amount of $124,747.96. A credit card statement ending December 27, 2019, in the amount of $4,517.29.
Second. Motion made in second by Mr. Lewis. Any question?
Mr. President, our auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions that his review raised were answered to his satisfaction by our township personnel. He has recommended these warrants be approved. I agree. I recommend it as well.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 10.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the second reading of ordinance P-29 of 2019, authorizing traffic restriction. In particular, it is to rescind the special purpose parking zone on the side of a residential dwelling at 2500 East County Line Road at the gate.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions? This is the second reading. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 11. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance P-120, 2020, amending Chapter 30, pensions and employee benefits, and Chapter 4, the administration of government.
Second.
Yes. Ms. Cuthbertson, would you explain this to us, or...
Sure. This ordinance is doing a few things. It's cleaning up some housekeeping language, moving some components, same wording, just into the proper chapter that it should be in. It is including and codifying a 2012 bargaining item with the police contract that never made it into the codification regarding surviving spouses of police officers. It is excluding any lump sum payments made to employee, non-bargaining unit employees upon termination for unused leave time. Like I said, it's excluding that from the wage base. And it is including any earnings, workers' comp related, to be included in the wage base. So if some employee's out on workers' comp, they wouldn't be penalized for being out on workers' comp.
Got it. Any questions on this? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. And thank you for that great explanation. Item number 12, ordinance P-32020.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance... Oh, I'm sorry, wrong one. Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance, the second reading of ordinance P-32020, approving the Second Amendment with AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation, the manager for new singular wireless PCS LLC pertaining to the cell tower lease agreement for the property located at 9,000 Parkview Drive, Haverford Township.
Okay, prior to a second, let me make a correction. This is, in fact, the first reading of the Second Lease Amendment.
Okay.
So this is a first reading, not a second reading.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item number 13, ordinance P-42020.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-42020, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways, rescinding the 15-minute parking or parking time limited on Lawrence Road from the western property line of 1401 Lawrence Road to the western boundary line of the common driveway, leading to the rear homes, rear of the home, Lawrence Road.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item number 14, Mr. Aliva.
President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-52020, approving an ordinance prohibiting the use of tobacco in recreational areas, parks, and playgrounds, providing penalties for violations there.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
As our Parks and Recreation Board weighed in on this.
Yes, they have.
Have they shared that with us?
Yes, they have. They've come in front of this board, and I have talked, the last time I was up, the last meeting, we spoke about it, yeah. They were against this ordinance because they didn't think it was there, but it was not. There was some dissension in the vote, so... But their recommendation to this board was not to pass this ordinance. They didn't feel that there was, that there were, they felt that we were trying to make an ordinance for a problem that did not exist, so...
If I could, I'm going to, rather than, the Parks Department is an advisory board, I'm going to ask our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Barrett, to come forward and give us his thoughts from the department. He's got his input from his advisory board, and I'd like to hear his input.
Not to put you on the spot, I think.
As Mario was saying, it was brought up at the Park Board, and the Park Board, before they voted on it, they took a month to think about it, to talk to the youth sports groups, to talk to other people in the community. And they felt like, as Mario said, that they hadn't heard any complaints about parking, I mean, smoking in the parks, or smoking at athletic events. And it was two commissioners, I think Steve and Mario, both said they had never heard any complaints of that. So while they supported trying to limit smoking, they thought that the enforcement would be tricky. I think it was a $1,000 fine. They thought that would be hard to enforce, and how would that work out in enforcement mechanism? So while they supported a resolution saying they would like not see smoking in the parks, that was the second resolution after they voted down the one that had to do with a fine. And from the perspective of Parks and Recreation, we haven't heard of those issues at the parks, and we were, so we didn't think that we might be solving something that wasn't an issue at our parks. So that is what our recommendation was, although we really let the board have their say, and they kicked it around for two meetings, and that's what they came up with.
Just...
Go ahead.
I mean, there was some disagreement on the Park Board.
Yes, yes.
And just, I mean, I respectfully would disagree with our Park Board. I mean, I understand the notion that if you personally haven't heard of a complaint or one hasn't been called into a particular commissioner, I understand that. But I think smoking, somebody smoking at a park when you're there with your kids or you're at a sporting event, isn't something you necessarily rise to the level of you calling your commissioner, or calling, you certainly don't call your police if there's no ordinance force. And we know that this is something that's happening across the Commonwealth and across the county. For example, part of this project is, the Pennsylvania Department of Health will provide us with free signs for young lungs at play. It's a movement that is being put forth by our Department of Health at the state level. It's being accepted and adopted by the county at county parks. It's been adopted in other townships within this county. I mean, I just don't, I don't see the opposition to it in terms of enforcement. There's lots of things. I mean, we just talked about a nuisance ordinance, about how difficult that is. I spent the last two years dealing with an issue of trying to enforce an ordinance. It goes before a district justice, and they impose essentially whatever fee they want, up to $1,000. And that would be the same with this. I don't, you know, I think we're, the concept that we're looking to solve a problem that doesn't exist, well, I think we're looking to come up with reasons to not pass it. It seems self-explanatory that we wouldn't want smoking cigarettes, we wouldn't want smoking vaping, and we wouldn't want smoking of any kinds in the parks. And if somebody has a sign that they can point to as someone's smoking, that would probably be it. They can point to that sign, and I think it's worthwhile, and we should have it in our parks. And I certainly don't think we should become the outlier and sort of have smoking in the parks as the hill that we become the outlier. And that's what we will become, because this is not something that is, it's going to be in every park in this county within the next two years.
I agree with you. You know, when you're, you're asking, there's two different things going on here. You know, people ask me, Commissioner, have you ever had phone calls about this? No, I've never had issues with this. Am I against this ordinance? I am, I am for it. I am 100% for, if people feel that they're, that they're, I'd rather have something in place so that if somebody is affected, if there's a child affected, you can call the police, and there can, that person can be removed, rather than somebody blowing smoke in somebody's face and not being able to, not, there not being a mechanism in which to remove that person from that park. So I support this ordinance, you know, so that's...
One of the things that came up, and we did address it at the Park Board meeting, was that a number of youth sports organizations, as part of their coaches' pledge or ethics and parents' ethics, will have something in there. We do that with our Havertown Hoops. They read a coach's ethics pledge, we send some to the parents, saying, here's the guidelines. And a lot of those, if not all of them, include references to smoking and not smoking at youth sports events and being, you know, a good role model for youth sports. So I think that some of the things that the Park Board was saying when they voted on it was that this is being addressed a lot of times at the youth sports level, when they're dealing directly with the parents that are involved in youth sports.
Yeah, but a lot of times you don't have, you know, the parents of the youth sports people aren't the ones that are causing the problems here. A lot of times, you get kids in the parks, or you get people in the park who are just, because they can smoke in the park, they will just go ahead and do that. So I don't disagree with this ordinance.
Mario, though, the issue with second-hand smoke is really, the health issues, for the most part, are indoors or in cars. So we're talking about your, I'm not sure a kid smoking a cigarette in a park, other than infecting himself, isn't affecting other people in the park, unless you're standing right next to somebody. So I, and I think the issue is one, at sporting events, if somebody's smoking a cigarette next to you, that's different than somebody being in the park.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not encouraging anybody to smoke. I spent 35 years telling people not to, but I'm sure that's solving the problem.
Brian, have you gotten any...
It would make you an unusual doctor, Dr. Hart.
Yeah, we have not, you know...
I just asked Brian a question. Can I just ask Brian a question? Did you...
No, we had not received any complaints of issues of smoking at parks or smoking at sporting events.
Police? You get called for that, or no?
No, we don't. And I guess one of my concerns is while I'm listening to this, how will we police, we'll get the calls to take care of this? And it kind of puts us in a difficult situation where you have a lot of people in a park, and you're chasing people out because they're smoking a cigarette. So I think, you know, we need a little more input as far as how we would handle it from the police department's side.
And I think from the Park Board's response was similar to John's, they would think that a resolution saying that this shouldn't happen was good, but the enforcement mechanisms, they thought, could be tricky, pitting neighbors against neighbors, and, you know, how would you enforce it? So I think that they were, you know, Mario and Steve were there when they talked about it, they were very much in for no smoking in the parks. They thought it was a great idea, nobody should be smoking, nobody should be smoking around children. They just weren't sure the enforcement mechanisms would be appropriate for what we're trying to do. And that was the main thrust of their thing, because there was a second, there was one resolution to vote, I mean, one vote to vote down the penalties. Another resolution saying they support it, and I think that was unanimous, that a resolution just from the board saying the mind of the board is that we shouldn't have smoking at parks and in youth sporting events.
Right.
Mr. Siegel.
I'm kind of amazed that we're having a discussion about why this is impossible or difficult to enforce. 1,150 communities in Pennsylvania have already enacted this ordinance or a version of it as of September of 2019. I can tell you, I have seen people smoking, and generally what happens is, I say, would you stop? I'm highly allergic. I can't be around anyone smoking. I can't be around cigarette butts. They make me ill almost instantly. And no, do I call the police? No. But if you would have that situation, what would normally happen? You have lots of laws, chief, that you know people, that you generally either don't enforce or you say to someone, hey, could you just stop it? And it goes away. And that's what I expect would happen. I don't anticipate a fine. But I find it almost embarrassing that we're debating whether we need to have an ordinance where you can't smoke at your office, you can't smoke in a restaurant, you can't smoke in almost any other type of facility on a SEPTA station or anywhere else. But yet, the message we would send is that it's acceptable to this community to allow people to smoke in our playgrounds and our parks. I just am sort of shocked by that, although sort of nothing will shock me anymore with what goes on in our society. But it's 1,150 communities. The Park Board may not see a problem. We don't call the police every time there is a problem. And most people will say, hey, could you stop? Or, hey, look, there's a sign. And that's what's going to happen. It's the way most people deal with things. And to use anecdotal evidence as a basis for approving or voting against an ordinance is not how it should be done, in my opinion.
Mr. President. Mr. Holmes.
Commissioner Siegel raises excellent points. But I do, I have a very technical concern about this ordinance, because it suggests that it's only the part of parks where children are or may be present, but may be present is every square inch of our parks. So this ordinance, either, either this ordinance bans smoking on every square inch of every park in Haverford Township, or we're going to try to regulate smoking around the ball fields and around the places where organized things happen. Now, I would suggest that perhaps we try maybe a compromise approach where we get our own young lungs-in-play signs, we put them near our parks, we put them near the areas in our parks where the organized activity takes place. Like, for instance, in the Sixth Ward, I've got the jest tract that runs behind Homestead Avenue, comes off Haverford Road. That is, you know, that's a place principally where people illegally walk their dogs and do things like that. And if a person can't smoke a cigarette or smoke a cigar, do something like that, walking down that, you know, hundreds of yards before you get to any kind of playground equipment or anything like that. I think, you know, Dan raises an excellent point about how few places people can now have a smoke. We're about to have 34 parks that must equal several square miles by the time we add them all up, of more places where nobody can have a cigarette or have a cigar or smoke a pipe. And Dr. Hart raises the issue, this is not, we're not talking about under pavilions or inside a workplace or in an enclosed area. And until we, as a society, just declare that cigarettes are forbidden, like other drugs are forbidden, I just don't think we should add to the list of places that smokers are banished from. I don't think we should add a, another weapon in the quiver of an angry person who doesn't want somebody to smoke and wants the police to do something about it, instead of saying, of saying, you know, my son's playing right here, could you, could you, could you smoke elsewhere? Or, I'm highly, I, I have a problem with smoke, could you smoke, could you smoke elsewhere? And, and I'm sure 95% of smokers would say sure. And the 5% that wouldn't, well, we don't, um, we just have to deal with that as a society. So I, I would recommend, I, I'm going to move that we table this, and consider the, an approach of designating areas of our parks as, as non-smoking, but leaving a $1,000 fine and leaving the criminal element out of this ordinance for now. And, and seeing what it's like in our spring, if we have this problem, see if people behave. Officially move to table.
Tuck into table.
Motion made in second.
Can I comment?
Yes, go ahead.
So, so you want to table to consider, what, what you're actually proposing is designating smoking areas in the park. You want to go to the, you want to go to the point of saying, in this area, you're not only, we're not only going to say, you can't smoke, but you're allowed to smoke. So we're going to be the township that declares parts of our parks are hereby designated smoking areas.
Well, right now, they're all smoking areas.
At the shore, they've banned it on beaches.
We're going to publicize.
Mr. President, we have a motion to table.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why we're still discussing.
I'm not, I'm not trying to publish anything.
At this point, the discussion is over, we have a motion made in second to table. Please call a roll on the motion to table.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes, to table.
Mr. Aliva.
No.
Mr. McCluskey.
No.
Mr. Siegel.
No.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
No.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Uh, no. Five-four, no, so we can continue the discussion.
Uh, the shore, they banned it on, like, the beaches, and they, I know it's hard to enforce there, but they've found ways to enforce things there, so I don't know how you can enforce it at parks and stuff.
Is this going to, and when we're talking parks, does this include our trails? Are people not allowed?
I was going to say the same thing.
No.
Why, there's kids, I was there Sunday, there were children in, in the trails.
Well, so, I, but I, I, then I'm sort of agreeing with Larry, we're sort of telling people who, there's not a health, there's somebody walking by you on a, a trail, smoking a cigarette, but it's not affecting your health.
If you want to amend this to include that, this is part of, this is the draft sample ordinance, slightly modified for our township, from the Young Lungs at Play. I would have no problem with expanding it to our trails, et cetera.
But don't we, don't?
But that's not a problem for me, if someone wants to propose an amendment.
Don't we have all sorts of ordinances that involve rules and ordinances and regulations that we have for our parks that don't extend to our trails?
But, I'm, I'm trying to clarify, I, I don't know.
I mean, I, I think, I think this, this is, this is an ordinance that we're putting for our parks, playgrounds, and recreational fields. They're going to be tobacco-free zones.
All right, so who moved this ordinance?
Mario.
Uh, Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Um, there's a section of this ordinance, sorry, it disappeared from my screen, but the section of the ordinance that declared, here we go, section two, all areas of township parks and playgrounds where children are or may be present are designated tobacco-free, and the use or smoking of any tobacco product of any form is prohibited. Subsection B, signs shall be posted delineating the tobacco-free areas. My concern is that A, is every square inch of every township park and playground, because there's no place in our pla, in our parks where children may not be present. So, would you accept an amendment to this ordinance where A is limited to all areas of township parks and playgrounds where children play in organized activities or on children's, you know, children's playsets and, and the equipment that we have? And then signs shall be posted delineating tobacco-free areas, in the same way that we've, I believe, limited dogs to those areas where, not to be in those areas where baseball dugouts are, baseball fields are, within 10 feet of, of a, of any of our grandstands, right? So, Mr. Aliva, would you accept that, that amendment, or an amendment that accomplishes that to this ordinance?
I don't see how you'd do that. I don't, I mean, and when, when we did the, if you're talking about the, the dog ordinance, that was, you know, there was parks that were too small for that, for, you know, for dogs, and, and so there was, there was amendments to that, which were added afterwards.
Okay, well, let's be real clear, the history on that, the history on that, no, no, I've got to respond to him, because it was my question, Mr. McCluskey. E, you, that, that dog ordinance was done specifically to address some residents that had serious allergies to dogs, and there were parks that were so small that we felt like that would be, the, any dog in that park could affect anybody. And, and we particular, and, and we also delineated one park in particular with someone in mind, okay? Now, are, are you suggesting that, that there should be no distinctions? That, that, that you won't accept any exceptions to, to, to 2A? Or are you just saying what I said doesn't, doesn't work?
No, what, what I'm saying is, you're, you're going to have to, you're going to have to sit down and figure out what those zones are. Because in some parks, you're not, like, with the dogs. I'm just saying, the same thing happened with the dogs.
Right, but is the ordinance, as you move, section 2A, I read this to say that every single square inch of our township parks and playgrounds are going to be prohibited from smoking, because a child can be present in any of them.
Correct.
Or children are or may be present. Is that your intention?
I think so, that's the intention of the ordinance, yeah.
Okay, so, my question is, would you accept any amendment to this ordinance that, that narrows the prohibited area in these parks?
I'm just saying that the, that would, that would, that's not for me to decide, that's...
It is, you moved the, you moved the ordinance.
Discussion, I understand, but there needs to be discussion, because there, this is not affecting just my, it's affecting everybody, so we need, we should discuss whether this should be, I'd be glad to do.
And I would suggest, once again, that we table this ordinance and have a serious discussion at the next work session, because we never had a discussion at any work session about this ordinance, until now, and this isn't a work session, this is a, this is a law-passing session.
Can I, can I comment?
Yeah, Mr., go ahead.
Just, just to be clear, though, when we passed the, the issue with dog, it was because the Park Board came before us and said, we believe there is value to this community in allowing certain residents to walk their dog. So we carved out areas within the parks that they were allowed to walk their dogs. You want us to carve out an area and say, this is where you go smoke? I mean, I just don't see us as a township saying that as a health policy. I mean, we're, that, that takes this, that takes this movement that is being pushed at the state and county level, and bastardizes it to say, not only are we not going to pass what you're suggesting, we're going to create certain segments of our park and say, these are smoking areas.
I, I, I mean, well, first of all, I guess the Parks and Rec Board, their opinion is worthwhile on the dog issue, but their opinion is not worthwhile on the issue of not smoking.
That's totally not fair.
Well, I mean, I, don't bring it up that bad. I don't mention, you can disagree with them, but I mean, and, and that's fine, make it your disagreement, but don't bring up what the park did with, with dogs, and then, and in, at the same meeting, disregard what the, what the Parks Board is suggesting.
I didn't bring up the dogs. Yours and Mario's conversation brought up the dogs, and I believe, if we rewind the tape, you brought up the dogs.
Yeah, so, look, Mario, Mario, it isn't your, this isn't about your ward, this is your ordinance, because you moved it into, into consideration. Now, if you don't, if, if you don't think it's appropriate for, if you think that all of us as a board need to talk about whether or not there should just be no smoking areas, now, look, you want to turn this into, I want to create smoking areas. I don't want to create smoking areas, we have smoking areas. All of our parks now allow smoking, and we just count on people, you know, to behave, and not blow smoke in children's faces, or listen if somebody complains that the smoke is bothering them, or worse, the smoke can actually hurt them. Okay, that's what we're doing right now. So don't turn my opposition to going no smoke, non-smoking into, in Haverford Township, into, I want to make designated smoking areas. I'm just trying to limit what we prohibit here. I don't think.
Respectfully, we don't have, we don't, we don't prohibit, we don't have a comment on whether you can smoke in the parks right now, but there's just nothing about it. You can smoke. Like, we don't, we don't actively come out and say, you can smoke here, which is what changing this would do. That's, that's my point.
Well, no, I'm sorry, no, what adopting this will do is say you can't smoke anywhere. And I, obviously, I'm not for that. I have no problem with, I have no problem with actually banning smoking within 10 feet of any baseball diamond, 10 feet of any lined football field, regularly-used stalker field, within 20 feet of any child's, a piece of child playground equipment. I have no problem with that. But I have a problem with the notion that in the far corner of Elwell Field, 150 yards from anybody, somebody can get fined $1,000 for lighting up a cigarette at 9:30 at night when they're walking, you know, through the park.
Let's not, let's not fear monger, it says pay a fine not exceeding $1,000.
This is a, this is a fine, it, it's a $1,000 fine, and, and, and so.
It's a paid fine not exceeding $1,000, not exceeding.
It is, it is a, we are penalizing this.
You can have a nuisance house and you get a much better fine.
Look, I just, no, no, look, I, I don't, I, I asked, I asked a simple question, I asked the person who moved this ordinance if he would make any change to section 2A that limited the, the prohibition of smoking in any of the areas of the park. It seems to me he has said no. So, that's fine. I, I've, I've suggested an amendment, the person who moved the ordinance into consideration doesn't accept that amendment.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I say something?
Mr. D'Amelio.
I totally agree with, with Mr. Holmes's saying, I mean, that's for the record, Steve, smoking is bad, it's bad for everyone. To think that people don't still smoke is wrong. And I agree with Larry, at 9:30 at night, if someone is, there's no one around, if someone lights a cigarette near a park, or the entrance to a park, gets fined up to $1,000, that's, that's really not fair. I mean, I think most people today, most residents realize that smoking around children isn't appropriate. I've never seen them do that around a baseball diamond. But I would ask Mario, that maybe we could discuss this further, I'm asking you maybe to, to vote to table, so that we could discuss this further in exec, in a work session, so that we can, we can decide on how we're going to proceed with this.
Well, I'd like to send it, I'd like to send it back, let me give you my two cents. I, I kind of agree with you, Bill, if I take a walk at night and I want to have a cigar or something, not that I smoke, but, where you're walking, you know, if you're walking through the park. But I, I tell you what, I'd fine the guy $1,000 if he throws the butt on the ground in my park.
That's, you already could fine him for that.
So, so, yeah, but, again, we, we can't do it. The, the trash, when we talked about the dog, if you want to bring the dogs back up, we talked about the refuges. There's also trash from the smoking, so that, it's got to be addressed in detail. And I'm, I'm not for banning people's rights to do anything we've, across the board, but, but the refuge and, you, and you're right, there are, I, I have a friend that was smoking, got pulled over by a New Jersey State Trooper, trooper walked up to the car, he threw a cigarette butt out on the street, trooper said, sir, get out of the car, which is unusual. Took him to the back because his family was in the car, and he says, you can either pick up that cigarette butt, or I'm going to give you a $275 fine for littering, for throwing it out of your car. The offense, the offensive part, one, he was smoking in a car with his kids, I just totally disagree with, but throwing those things out, they're eaten by animals, dogs, geese, ducks, what, you name it, somebody picks it up, they're just disgusting when you're on the road, seen people out there, so.
Totally agree with that.
The enforcement is probably more on the littering side, that's my personal opinion. Uh, I'd like to see this go back to committee, and the ordinance committee, for, let's go some tweaking, let's look at the other laws, or.
I think, I agree with you, Mr. President, I think it's best suited for a work session, so I would move to table.
I'll second.
Motion made to table, second.
We, you can have two motions to table on the same ordinance.
Motion, you can.
Why?
You can, and let's kill the ordinance.
You can't bring the same ordinance twice. You're bringing up the same ordinance twice.
I, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to the ordinance committee for reconsideration, reevaluation, rewriting in more detail.
You already have a motion on the table, you have to vote for the motion.
No, we can't, solicitors just informed us, you can't have a second motion to table, we've already had a motion to table.
Right.
We didn't table. So he said you could make an alternate, you could make an alternate motion to send it back to committee.
Why don't you just vote, why don't you just vote on the actual motion?
Exactly.
If you wish to send it back, you should vote no.
Second, I'd second President Wexler's motion.
Hey, we're going to take a vote on the motion as it stands.
Just as a point of reference.
Motion, your motion.
We're still having a discussion here.
A motion on this, okay, okay.
I just located, uh, which probably the only one in the room who will remember this is Chief Iola, but on May 28, 1991, this board voted by a nine-to-zero vote with Commissioners Kapustin and others, who are no longer along, no longer with us, to ban cigarette vending machines in the township. And there was, and these are extremely detailed minutes, a lengthy discussion with documentation about the dangers of smoking for teens and children back in 1991, yet here we are, decades later, and, like, so many things in society we're not moving for.
That's not what we're doing, nobody's up here is talking about encouraging smoking.
Smoking is a danger for children.
He said it's dangerous and unhealthy. I just said that. And we all said that.
1991 was hardly the dark ages, they banned cigarette advertising on TV in 1971, they put the, they put the warning on cigarette packs in 64. I, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be prehistoric here, I'm talking about whether it's necessary to ban smoking in every square inch, but let's just call the ordinance, vote.
I will, and I'll just remind you, there was a township employee who came here and pleaded with us about a year ago, his son was extremely allergic, as Mr. Siegel appears to be, and at baseball games, and he pleaded for that, he was a member of our police department, actually. And he was pleading for us for consideration for his son's health that we banned smoking there. So, I, in discussion with the solicitor, we're going to take, call a roll on the original ordinance.
And this is only a first reading, there'll be time for more discussion.
Yeah, this is on the first reading, basically, if we turn it down, we can take it back to the committee or whatever. So it's up to you, gentlemen. Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
No.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Wexler.
No.
Five-four.
Five-four, the original motion passes five to four. Thank you for your input.
Can we, can I ask a question, point of clarification, even though this is the first reading, at the next work session, can, we won't, yeah, we could discuss this.
Yeah, we can discuss it at the next session, and we can make changes to the ordinance if everybody's.
Yeah, if we make a change that's substantial, we'll have to have another first reading, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, now, item number 15, document destruction.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lewis.
A motion to adopt Resolution 2168-2020, that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in accordance with the municipal records manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of public records.
Second.
Motion made in second, any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item number 16, comprehensive fee schedule.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2169-2020, approving Haverford Township's comprehensive free fee schedule.
Motion made, or second?
Second.
Second. I'd ask the Director of Finance, any major changes in this schedule that we should know about?
Um, there was some clarifications, there was an administrative fee pertaining to sidewalks that was abolished, we found that wasn't necessary. There were some changes proposed by the Park and Rec Department, Mr. Barrett could explain if you would like some details on those, primarily pertaining to rental at the Denny Gym and the Crick Space. There was a proposed change regarding ice time at the stadium, proposed by our stadium operations manager, Mr. Turnbull. And there was some clarification for ease with permits pertaining to decks and small additions to streamline that process and calculation. And finally, there was a change proposed by the Health Department in permit, permitting mobile food vendors.
And there's one change that our, our finance director has not noted, but it is, it is worth saying, because it's sizable. Instead of $35 for a copy of a DVD of the Commissioners' meeting, you can now have one for $2.
It's gone down dramatically.
It's now dawned on us that it's pretty cheap to make these, so we have reduced that. I've personally gone through all of these changes in here, and the changes to the rentals and some of the costs associated with, with the Crick Center and the Denny Gym are certainly a long time in coming. It is our goal ultimately for that site to be as self-deficient as it can be, as we have expected of our stadium, to run much more as a business and be, and be self-deficient. So, these, we're not talking about more than five, six, seven percent increases in some of the fees, but after years of no increase at all, we're really talking about an annual rate of less than one or two percent in terms of increase. And frankly, it's, it's, it's been a long time coming. The other things are simply some clarifications and some readjustments of the fees, and I certainly recommend that we adopt them.
Thank you. Any other questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Item 17, contract award.
Mr. President, motion to award a two-year full maintenance service contract from February 1, 2020 through January 31, 2022, to the Tustin Group, Inc., Norristown, PA, in the amount of $11,600 annually, payable in quarterly installments of $2,900 for the inspection, maintenance, and repair services of the HVAC system at 9,000 Parkview Drive.
Correct. Second.
Motion made in second by Mr. Aliva.
Brian, is Tustin who has the contract now?
Tozer Train is the one who currently has the contract, is going to end at the end of this month, I believe. I think it's the chance of January 31.
Tustin could hopefully solve the.
Yeah, we've, you know, we've had some issues with Tozer figuring out our system. When we called them, they might come, get something fixed, a communication issue, and then a couple hours later, we had the same communication issue. So, we felt like they didn't understand us and their service wasn't up to the part we expected. So, we looked into trying to get us, somebody to provide better service, really.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Second part of this.
Mr. President, make a motion to award a two-year full maintenance service contract February 1, 2020 to January 31, 2022, to the Tustin Group, Inc., Norristown, PA, in the amount of $3,733 annually for maintenance and programming services of the BAS system at 9,000 Parkview Drive.
Correct.
Second. Motion made in second by Mr. Lewis. Just to clarify to the public, BAS system stands for?
Building Automation System.
Great. Building Automation System, thank you. Any questions on this contract? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Item 18 is continuation of 2020 appointments to our boards and commissions. First item is the planning commission for a four-year term.
Yes, or Mr. Chairman.
Good.
I would like to appoint Brent Bodner to serve on the planning commission to a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2023.
Second.
Motion made in second for Mr. Brent Bodner for a four-year term.
Mr. President, motion to appoint Jack Garrett to serve on the planning commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2023.
Second.
Motion made in second for Mr. Jack Garrett. Any other nominations?
Mr. President, I move we close nominations.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Bodner.
Mr. Aliva.
Brent Bodner, please.
Mr. McCluskey.
Jack Garrett.
Mr. Siegel.
Jack Garrett.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Bodner.
Mr. Quinn.
Brent Bodner.
Dr. Hart.
Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Wexler.
Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Garrett carries five-four.
Okay. Next is Senior Citizens Advisory, Ward 1, 5, 7, 8, and 9. I have to defer mine, I have not heard back from two people yet.
Have to defer mine as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have Carol Finicaro.
Carol, last name again?
Finicaro.
Finicaro.
Mr. President.
Common spelling, I guess?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Common spelling, I assume.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will give the spelling to.
Mr. Quinn.
I will defer mine as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. President, I appoint Ronald Pelchat, P-L-C-H-A-T.
Thank them for volunteering those, Ms. Finicaro, Mr. Pelchat. Environmental Advisory Commission, these are by Ward, Ward 3.
I would appoint Jonathan Keel.
Jonathan Keel.
A-I-E-L.
A-I-E-L. And for the ninth ward, I'd like to appoint Mr. Hank Schwab, S-C-H-W-A-B. Next item, yes, go ahead, questions?
I was just going to ask for clarification. The EAC isn't a yearly thing that every ward does, right? These are two-year or three-year terms?
It's not, I had, my, my appointment had to resign.
Openings, okay.
Mine had resigned, that's why it was.
Okay, all right, thanks. Just didn't remember doing any last.
The person for the ninth ward, it could, could not serve, she was not able to serve anymore. Item 19 is continuations of citizens' form for any non-agenda items. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on any item? Does not have to be an agenda.
Any smokers in the audience?
I won't go for smoking, I'll go for one more.
Okay.
My name is Victor Barsky, I'm a little bit 28 Bambino Lane, and I'm on the EAC, and I want to thank whoever changed from our former supplier to the new one at the Crick. It's always been a, interesting, the system there is so complicated that many times I've been there, the air conditioning and the heater are on the same time. And I'm hoping that the new people taking over will, will address that so that we just have one or the other running at the proper time. Because it is very complicated, but hopefully the new people will take over, so Jerry and Brian, whoever, whoever did it, thank you. And that's it, and smoke on or not, whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barsky. Any other member? There being none, we'll move to new business, any new business by any member of the board.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
It's, it's new or other business, but it's informing the public. The public may remember, we passed an ordinance 2886-2019, which authorized the sale of 599 Glendale Road, and we also hired Crayman Corporation as the listing agent and the auction manager with the discretion of Crayman to determine the date for the auction. They've now set the date for the auction of 599 Glendale Road, which is the old Recreation Department facility, for Thursday, February 27, 2020, at 2:00 p.m. The auction will be held here in this meeting room at 1014 Darby Road. There are preview days for potential buyers to look at the property. They are Tuesday, February 25, from 12:00 p.m. to 1:30 p.m., and Thursday, February 27, from 12:30 to 1:30 p.m. The proceeds of this sale will go exclusively for further completion of the Darby Creek Trail and/or improvements to Mary Place, as mandated by the Pennsylvania Department of Natural Resources as part of our agreement for the property.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. President, also, probably more other business than new, but worth noting, at, at our February 3 meeting, Jamie Schlesinger of PFM Financial Advisors and Bill Richter of Reed Smith, who together comprise our, constitute our, our bond counsel and, and financial advisors, will be presenting to us and to the public the costs that will be associated with us doing and refunding of our 2014 general obligation bonds. The first, the first opportunity to so refund them is, is in the first quarter of 2020. So, we will be introducing a parameters-based ordinance at the February 10 meeting. The savings that we will get over the remaining life of these bonds will exceed $1 million, so this is definitely an exercise worth undertaking and something that we've been preparing for and talked about as we prepared our 2020 budget. So, just letting folks know that's coming, so pay attention at our February 3 work session and know that we will be considering, and I will be recommending we pass, a bond ordinance at the February 10 meeting. And as you recall, those ordinances only need to be passed once to be effective, and so I look forward to providing more information then.
Thank you very much. Any other item? I have one, I have a letter here from Representative Mike Zabel. He's informing us that on Thursday, February 6, his office will be working with Rick Velelo, the Deputy Secretary for Community Affairs at Pennsylvania's Department of Community and Economic Development, as we'd call DCED, and it will be a roundtable discussion for local government officials. This meeting will be at 10:00 a.m. at the Brookhaven Borough Building on Cambridge Road in Brookhaven, is open to all elected and appointed local government officials in 163rd, which includes most of, some of Haver Town. Mr. Velelo is the four-term mayor of City of Lock Haven, has experience with many of the issues you may be dealing with today, and has the tools and the authority to help you deal with those issues. He's responsible for approving the many grant, loan, and technical assistance programs available to you at the Governor's Center for Local Government and DCED as a whole. He's, he's willing to answer questions in meeting, with meeting with us or our township officials. So, anybody that's interested in going, please let me or Mr. Berman know, and hopefully somebody from the township, one of our appointed officials will go, as well as any elected official that feels they should go. Any other business, any, any other new business or information? We'll move to other business, Mr. D'Amelio.
Thank you, Mr. President. John, congratulations again on 52 years. You, you run the, probably the best police department in county, well-trained, very fair, and you guys, your leadership with you and Joe is just, just refreshing to watch it. So, good luck in another 52 years, you know?
Fifty.
Sure you'll be here, 50 years, I'm sure you'll be here. Just a couple of things, I questioned about the plastic bags, and I asked Mr. Pogonizzi today, I, I saw another article today, another municipality, I can't remember which one it was, passed another ordinance to ban plastic bags. I asked Mr. Pogonizzi where we were with that, and he said his, his plans to have a recommendation or options presented in our March, March workshop. So, we should have something in March about the plastic bags. And trails, I was at, the trails was a beautiful day the other day, the trails were just, it's one of the best things this township ever did, it was create these trails, these, they're just, it's fabulous to watch everyone out there, and it just really enhances the community. I think we, we need to put that in our newsletters, remind people about these beautiful trails that we have. Finally, I want to welcome Connor, I think this is your first real Commissioners' meeting as a Commissioner, welcome. You told me today that you send emails out to constituents. Wow, they just went from the 19th century to the 21st century. Congratulations.
I just want to remind everybody that we're having Commissioner D'Amelio, myself, and the rest of the board will be welcome to come, we'll be hosting over at Manoa Fire Company, a billboard meeting. The solicitor will be there with us to discuss, you know, to be a open discussion on, on the billboards and to answer any questions, and so that is tomorrow night at, at 7 o'clock. Anyone is welcome to come.
We have the online petition.
Yeah, we have an online petition also, if you go to my Facebook, or, yeah. An online petition to sign against the billboards.
Andy, do you have that website?
I was going to read it.
Change.org is the, is the website.
I think it's something we might want to post on the township website, if that would be appropriate, I don't know.
No.
No, not, not appropriate, okay. Okay.
Sorry, let's all huddle together, no. I mean, I think we, important, people need to understand, that petition is for, is for our constituents, for the residents of the township, and for them to consider and sign. We, the board, have a position, it's formally represented by our solicitor, who, and we are parties to this litigation, so I, I think we want to be, we, we are, we are encouraging our constituents to be involved and be informed, but we're parties to the litigation, so we have to be, we have to.
Okay, you can go to my Facebook, Mario Aliva, Commissioner, and you can, right there, you can go and fill out the petition, okay? Mario Aliva, Commissioner, Facebook. It's listed right on there.
Thank you.
I have nothing further.
Mr. McCluskey.
And like the page if you want further updates from Mario. I, I just wanted to thank Susanna and everybody on the Historical Commission for their presentation tonight, and it is, you know, it's a good illustration, as she said, that encompassed a couple of years, but it is a good illustration of people, she listed out the, the committee members. Good illustration of how much time volunteers in this township to vote to these committees and these groups that we just spent the better part of the last two meetings fighting over, but in, in the progress, we want to make sure we do thank them all for their time and the amount of time that they put into it. You know, that was a 10 to 15-minute presentation, but there were hours that go into reviewing the designs that she talked about in terms of those presentations, and I know there were hours in terms of applying for that grant, so I think all of us, we thank members of the Historical Commission and all the boards and commissions we have in town. And Murrewood Park Civic Association has their annual progressive dinner on January 25, so anybody in the neighborhood who wants to stop by, usually a fun night where people just hang out and get to know their neighbors. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel.
Two quick things, one, I want to commend the chief. When I first got elected, I think it was a day or two later when he called me and said, Dan, I have to show you the police station. And that call, in large part, led to us being here and the police being in, in their facility below. And, you know, our police, I, I've, I've litigated a lot of cases over the years against police, and our police are, never been with them, and I've never seen anything that would lend itself to that, and that's part of your leadership, and, and I commend you. But, as a practical matter, a good part of what has pushed, pushed me to make certain that we had a new facility was that phone call and then the eye-opening tour that I can still remember, you know, 12 years later, so thank you.
You had to work there every day, you will remember it, so thank you very much.
And, not to address the tobacco issue, but I do want to just read a quote that I hope inspires all of us as what we do, from Maxine Waters, who's the Congresswoman for a long time from California, who always said, and it's, and I believe this, that we have a responsibility as elected officials to do good public policy in the best interest of all the people. all the people. And our vote on the tobacco, I believe, fulfills that quote beautifully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things. John, congratulations on fifty years here in the township. I have enjoyed very much working with you. And we'll enjoy in several weeks, constituent meeting for the sixth ward will be hosted at the Chestnut Wald School. And Chief Viola, as he has always done with, sometimes with Deputy Chief Hagan, and sometimes on his own, will be in attendance, as will Dave Berman, our township manager. That will be seven o'clock on Thursday, the thirtieth of January, at the Chestnut Wald School on Lorraine. I would also like to thank the Historical Commission for an excellent presentation. Thank my constituent in particular for a presentation, a very excellent professional presentation. And, you know, that commission, the EAC, there are other boards we have who really, really go above and beyond the call of duty of our volunteers who work for us. And you just heard us tonight do our last couple appointments to our boards that we do each January. And without the volunteer effort and the great work and the dedication that these folks put into each one of these boards, we really couldn't operate this township the way we do. And we, as a board, could not be as informed as we are on a lot of the subjects that we have ultimately need to pass laws about. So I want to thank the Historic Commission in particular, but all of the volunteers and all the people who offered to volunteer their time and just this time were not able to be appointed to different boards. So that is, that's all I have. Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I just want to inform the board and the public that we had a public meeting last week on the billboards, and we had about two hundred folks that showed up. Commissioner McCluskey was there as well, and our solicitor, Jim Byrne, was there, had good dialogue with the public, back and forth. And we have an online petition, as Commissioner Aliva had mentioned, online petition that is being circulated throughout the township. And we have, I think, over, close to sixteen hundred signatures at this point in opposition to the billboards for a variety of reasons, including primarily safety concerns, diminished property values, and the concern of light pollution. So this case will be heard in the Court of Common Pleas beginning January twenty-first, the day after Martin Luther King Day, or expected to be a three-day court case with testimony from both sides, expert witnesses presented on both sides of the case. And I would urge residents, I plan to attend those hearings each of those days. And I would urge our residents to not only sign the petition, but to be present at the hearing in media for all three days or at least one day of the three days, to show the judge our resolve in Haverford Township in opposition to these billboards. So, and so again, please sign a petition and try to make every effort to be there in the courtroom on January twenty-first. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Okay. So I'd like to thank everybody in the seventh ward for their kind words and support as I took office. And if you would like to join my email list, you can send me an email at Connor@ConnorQuinn.org. And you can also go on to my Facebook page and like the page, and you can find all the info and stuff. And Chief, thank you for all of your service. And I didn't get to see the old, or get a tour of the old one, but I did get a tour of the new one, and it's great. So...
I'm sorry.
Glad to show you pictures.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I would just thank you as well, John, but I have a feeling you're going to be around for another fifty. So I think we've got a good chance of doing this again.
We'll see. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Dr. Hart?
Yeah, John, thank you very much. You have a wonderful job. We have a great police department. Also wanted to give thanks to all the people who came out on Saturday working on the home trail. This is the newest trail in Haverford Township. It starts at Darby Road and will eventually meet up with a trail Bradner is building, coming from Bryn Mar Avenue. So we had one of the benefits of global warming, of a nice, beautiful day, and had a lot of people out. And then speaking of trails, the Eighth Annual Philly Western Suburbs Trail Summit will be on Saturday, February first, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty at the Crick. The Haverford Recreation and Friends of Haverford Trails is hosting this regional gathering to promote trails and foster cooperation throughout the region. Everyone is welcome to attend, hear about trails and on-street biking and pedestrian improvements and opportunities in Haverford and throughout the western suburbs.
Thank you, Dr. Hart. I'd like to offer my congratulations to John. All the old jokes aside, you've done a phenomenal job. I see you out there on scenes, especially at fire scenes. You move as quickly as any of the young, as any of the young people out there. So you're still in great shape.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, both as police chief and as fire chief. My local meeting will be January twenty-third with the Hilltop Civic Association. All welcome to attend. And tomorrow night is the recognition of our volunteer firefighters at the Crick, tomorrow evening at seven PM, I believe. This is the annual recognition of awards for time in service, as well as for those who have undergone training and obtained certifications and different levels of firefighting, both officer training, firefighter training, specialized training, and also recognize those that have served and become life members of their fire companies of the Bureau of Fire. So members of the public are welcome to attend. That's tomorrow night at the Crick at seven PM, hosted by the Retention and Recruitment Commission of the Bureau of Fire. And that's all I have. We are adjourned.